All right, we'll break this meeting to order. Please stand for the voting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no guests this evening.
There are a few people on call.
Perfect, thank you. With that, we'll move on to correspondence and public participation. This is point in the meeting for comments on matters already on the agenda. Comments on agenda items should be accepted when that item comes up during the meeting. Interested persons may also send abuse and reform to the clerk or superintendent prior to the meeting, and those comments will be brought to the attention of the board chair in the meeting. Do we have any correspondence or public participation? 6.01 consent agenda.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion second. With that, I'll go to the vote. Frances.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Aye. Camera's calendar. Think we're all there.
Think so.
Good. Any questions? With that, we'll move into 8.01 old business. Discuss the bond project community meeting. I think we have to start from the 19th. Is that right?
19th.
19.
What time were we going to do that?
Six.
Six, okay, because middle school open house is four to 5:30 that night. Okay. So six.
I don't have my phones. What is the 19th?
Tuesday.
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 At six, yep.
Okay.
And we'll probably hold that in, I'm hoping the auditorium.
Sure. See the new stage.
It's done.
It's done, it's beautiful. They did a really nice job.
We'll have some renderings and all that stuff from my country. They look great.
Do we need to notice that, that there will be a quorum, but no action will be taken?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do you want the big screen to protect us on?
I would like to.
Okay.
Yes?
Or we could just act it out interpretively.
Dance.
On the new stage.
On the new stage.
You have a week to practice that routine. We'll notice those practices too.
And then with that, would you mind reaching out to Tyler? And was it Chris that was here? To make sure that they're, that still works for them? Because I think they'll be doing a little bit of presenting when we're talking about that stuff, so. Perfect.
Are we going to try to get flyers out?
Yeah, I'm going to form on this around. And then just ask them over you to kind of prove them, if that's okay?
Sure.
And then we can get them printed.
Could we do some of those yard signs, like they have for the...
Yeah, well, we were going to do big banners.
Some banners, and then I want those drawings hung in as many places as we can, so the public can actually look at them and see by...
Like each building, like each...
What they're...
Maybe City Hall would put one up for us, or...
Think they probably would.
Okay.
If you wanted to do some advertisements, we could have some students do some clips, how important it is to come.
Yeah, I was like that.
We'll have kids coming in, tell me, you send me like that little script or something. We can start those when they come in for schedules and what's there.
I'd like this on the website. Everything we have. We need to start working on that tomorrow.
Facebook, PTO, Booster Club. The kids are local people there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Good.
Okay. All right. With that, we'll move into new business. 9.01. Senior lunch, open campus.
Okay, I'm going to go over the rules, and then Paige is going to talk about why they would like it. The rules haven't changed. They have to have 18 credits, they have to have senior status, or they're not allowed to participate. A non-CHS student cannot pick them up for lunch without checking out to the office, and they still have to be checked out through the office by a parent. You can't just call, they have to come in. No underclassmen are allowed in any vehicle leaving for the lunch period. Students who are 18 years older are required to have parent guardian signature, even if they're 18. We still make them sign. If we get any calls regarding shoplifting, harassment, under responsible driving, we've had all the above, that would nuisance, then we do involve law enforcement, and we will cooperate with them, they will have consequences. They don't go to any other district school property while out for lunch unless they have permission to go pick up a sibling, or they're doing something specific. When they come back to school, they have to come through the front door. We had that conversation last year, those doors are locked now, so they have to ring to come back in, which helps, we know exactly what time they get out of there, or come back in. And they have to stay in the hallway with all the other students until the bell rings. They can't just loiter in the parking lot, sit in their vehicles, or drive from parking lot to parking lot. They have follow the speed limit on school property. Mention everywhere else. They can't block school buses, they can't go through the circle. If they bring food and drink back to the building, we put in there, it's consumptive teachers discretion, and the reason for that was some groups or whatever will have meetings during lunchtime, so they're allowed to bring their lunch back for that. Most of the time, they have to sit in the cafeteria and eat, but we don't let them just, oh, we're pulling in here before the bell rings, so they just take their lunch class, we don't let that happen. They can't drive another student's vehicle. And if they return to campus tardy three times, they lose privileges for two weeks. If they come back tardy six times, they lose privileges for the remainder of the semester. So the other thing they're not allowed to do is bring food back for underclassmen. Paige, do you want to talk about?
Well, as you know, I've been writing since I was a... I'll ask for a mental break, and I believe that all students should have it, but I'm only here to ask for the seniors, so.
And I know they'll be responsible, if they are, that'll have consequences, so. Any questions?
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approve the high school seniors to be allowed to leave campus for lunch after they have turned in the appropriate paperwork for the 25-26 school year. Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Anything further, board? Frances.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
9.02 with some resignations for information purposes, so there you have it. With that, we'll move into...
I have just one little...
Go ahead.
I just want our district to be aware of some of the very passionate parents that we have in our district, and I hope that our district can back our coaches, because I think several of the resignations we've received, starting back in April till now, have been parent-related.
I completely agree. We need a new backup.
Oh, thanks for that info. And, you know, I guess that's something we can just communicate to the coaches too, is that they have our sport. Yeah, when I was coaching, parents are tough. But I also understand that the two things you don't mess with with people is their kids and their paychecks. So that's part of it too. Yeah, I know, understanding it's really not personal, it's usually something else. But, okay.
All right, 9.03. Certified, this is where I'm going to be making some recommendations, we're going to take these out one at a time.
Okay, so the first one that I'd be recommending for the 25-26 school year is Josh Carlson, and that's for, he's K-8, a certified teacher.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Josh Carlson for the 25-26 school year as a K-8 certified teacher.
You want that to be a Paul PBS?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Because you can...
Yeah, yeah.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this? Any further, board?
Do you have any information about his history of teaching, or where he's coming from?
You want to share a little bit?
Experience in first grade, can't tell you off the top of my head where he's coming from, can't remember.
Is Sam Cooley?
Yeah, maybe.
He was in Busby?
Yeah. Several years of first grade experience, and a good quality candidate.
Great.
Thank you for asking.
Any other? Frances.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next is Shawna Sessions I'm recommending. Emergency authorized certification, and also the elementary. Where she was last year.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Shawna Sessions, pending emergency authorization certification for the 25-26 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this? Anything further, board?
Does Shawna have her, she has her associates?
Yep, correct, and she's working on her bachelor, just started another program.
Okay.
This will be your third.
Yes, this is her third.
Her third. Emergency authorization. Okay.
Okay, any other more? Frances.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, number three, we're recommending Stephanie Crook, emergency authorization certification pending, and also elementary school.
I move the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Stephanie Crook, pending emergency authorization certification for the 25-26 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Anything further, board?
What is her educational background?
She's almost completed her degree, she's going to have a special ed endorsement, and working very hard, put a lot of time into doing her studies, has been taking the necessary steps to get in the right place for her profession. And working her tail off. It's kind of nice to see somebody that's local and homegrown, trying to make those steps in the right direction.
She almost has her bachelor's, or her associate's?
Her, I believe it's her bachelor's, she's doing some teaching interns this year in our school as well. That's the first round of two that she has to do with her student teaching, and so she's been working hard at it.
Frances.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Tiff.
No.
No. Okay, Scott.
Fourth one, Kim Hall, also pending emergency authorization certification for elementary school. And right now, we're looking at her doing title, as she did last year.
I move the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Kim Hall, pending emergency authorization certification for the 25-26 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this? Anything further, board?
Same question about education.
No, I don't know what. She doesn't, she doesn't want to be a teacher for a living. She does well in the title program, she came up through the, you know, with the program, working with them and stuff, and understands, understands the program and how it works, and what it takes for kids, and last year worked very diligently in making it happen, and was able to, I should have had the numbers pulled up for you, but we exited quite a few kids out of the title program last year under her tutelage, so I'm very confident in her abilities to handle that position.
Based on the fact that there's no education, I would like to make my motion specifically for title in elementary school, that she doesn't get pulled into a classroom, because I don't think that, I think we need to have someone that's either has college education or working towards education to be in the... I would like to amend my motion. Colster Public Schools approves Kim Hall, pending emergency authorization for the 25-26 school year for the title position at Pineview Elementary School. So I don't know who's second to that, was that you?
Angie, too.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, have motion second, I have amended motion.
Thank you.
Any public comment on that? Any further, board?
I also have to say that she did a nice job keeping me informed, as somebody who has to enter that data and to enter the campus for her title hits. She did a great job working with me as well, so I think she's a great candidate.
Frances.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
No. Okay. Non-affiliated. 9.04.
Okay, we're making the recommendation to hire Morgan Clark for the 25-26 school year, and this is for payroll clerk, 21-15 hour.
Is that what our matrix is, 21-15? Okay. I move the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the non-affiliated hire of Morgan Clark as Colster Public Schools payroll clerk for the 25-26 school year.
One second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this? You got it right. Anything further, board?
What is her education or experience?
She doesn't have a whole lot in payroll, she, their family owns a small business that she has been helping with. She took some accounting classes in college, so I'm hoping that down the road, when she gets a little more comfortable, that she can pick up some more duties in the office, so.
We're excited.
I'm sorry. She did take accounting in college, and I guess as far as commenting on being public, I'm not sure if I am or not, but really excited about the positivity, the energy that we have with her, and the excitement that she's, I think, going to bring to us, and just the work, the work ethic too, was there. And anyway, it was some exciting stuff going down in the central office with her couple of hires.
Good.
This recommendation is coming from you, it's more, it's hers. Okay. Worked hard and long on these hires. That's a lot hours, what I care about, so. Okay. Anything else? Oh, careful. Frances.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Substitutes. So I have the list of substitutes, do you want me to just ask presented, or...
Are they all returning?
Uh, there's quite a few on here, there's some new ones, so I'm going to read through the list, do you want me to read it to you?
I don't think you need to read it, I think we can all see it.
Okay.
I don't think there's enough, seems like we're always looking for them anyway.
We have some more, it just didn't come through even today, so.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the list of district substitutes for the 25-26 school year as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Anything further, board? With that, Frances.
I abstain, my mother-in-law's included in the list.
Okay. Sabrina.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, 9.06, extracurricular.
All right, I'll be recommending for hire for the 25-26 school year for CHS head cross-country coach, Brian Sullivan.
We'll take that.
One more time, right?
Can you just put me up? Sorry, I was going to mention that.
Yeah.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Brian Sullivan for CHS head cross-country coach for the 25-26 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Anything further, board?
Who's the assistant coach?
Yep.
For two years in a row now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
He's got a great background in cross-country, so.
When I interviewed him, he, he's very passionate. Remind me of the high school track coach my daughter had down in Katy, just all about the kids, all about his sport. I think he'd be excellent.
Good.
Perfect. Frances.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, one more for the 25-26 school year, FBMS assistant football coach, Ryan Pedraza.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Ryan Pedraza, FBMS assistant football coach for the 25-26 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this?
Just when I interviewed, within the interview, Johnny was very comfortable with Ryan. Johnny felt that Ryan was strong technique-wise, and those type of things, where maybe Johnny is still learning. Johnny thought it was a good match for him, and so did I.
Yeah, I don't think this is Ryan's first year doing it anyway, I think he helped out last year, then, yeah. Volunteered. Yeah. Any referees? Uh, anything else?
I really appreciate that we're including the head coaches on those hiring decisions and getting their input.
There's people trying to get in at the central office door. Everybody else is on, we'll go check. I'm going to software upgrade, so.
Frances.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Aye. All right, 9.07 is the transportation routes.
Okay, so we have the proposed two route bus schedules. It's pending still, Land Deer School District. We've been trying to get in touch with them for over a week, I tried to get them today, still no answer. So these are pending, us getting those agreements signed from them. We're told that it passed, but we don't have the official paperwork yet from them, so. We'll keep after it. We emailed, even called.
Should we table this item until we get that paper?
Good, and then just a couple minute changes, actually, sometimes, so it's not a whole lot.
Because that changes a lot, right? If we don't get that, we're not, we're not sending activity bus either, so.
I don't know if we need to table it, if you leave that in your motion that it's pending. Per that, then we can enact on it whenever.
When you get it.
As soon as we get it, and then we don't have to have another meeting to do it.
That's a good idea.
And this is, if we have two, two route drivers, we have to have at least two route drivers, right?
We have pending board approval, I will be presenting someone for the second route our next meeting, or as soon as we can, whatever that is.
And we already have routes filed with the county?
Right.
And these are just additional routes? So once we file more, we can just pick and choose which routes to use?
Yep.
So filing more doesn't do, doesn't negate the ones that...
No, it just makes it really hard when we try to do a bus transportation claim, but that's my problem. Not yours.
Okay, at least she knows, and Sylvan's is fully aware.
Okay, yeah, all right.
I attended that, I mean, over...
Okay. I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the additional transportation route for the 25-26 school year, pending a signed transportation agreement from Land Deer School as presented.
Okay.
Angie, do you second that?
Yeah.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this? Anything further, board? Frances.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Aye. Hopefully it works out. Okay. 9.08.
Okay, so we have three of us that I'm recommending for the certified sick leave committee, myself, Derek Kirchner, Brittany Allen.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the following motion to appoint the administrative members to the district leave bank committee for CFA, Scott O'Trema, Derek Kirchner, Brittany Allen.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this? Anything further, board? Frances.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, 9.09, I'll be recommending for the sick leave committee for CCA, Scott O'Trema, Derek Kirchner, Brittany Allen.
I'll do the same thing.
Yeah, same thing.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the following motion to appoint the administrative members to the district leave bank committee for CCA, Scott O'Trema, Derek Kirchner, Brittany Allen.
Second.
I already wrote it. All right, I have a motion second. Any public comment on this? Anything further, board? Frances.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Aye. 9.01.
Okay. Do you want to take this?
I do not have that one. I have not been to one meeting.
I meant, do you want to take this?
I want somebody else in here to be like, I want to do this, so.
No, he wants you to make the recommendation. You're recommended, yeah.
I'll recommend somebody.
He's just been straight. Aggression.
If I didn't work out of town, I would totally do it.
I told them that you guys are all employed and busy, and obviously stepped in.
And if there's times you can't do it, I can, I mean, there are times when I get down if you couldn't do it.
I really like it, I mean, it only...
You can't do it all the time.
Well, I think I had a conflict, I know I did once last winter, I could make it, so.
If it's on Fridays, when my daughter doesn't have sports.
Yeah.
Okay. It's always that new.
Yeah. And sometimes I can pop away at...
Hey, we got more than I thought we had, so they'll be happy.
Yeah.
It isn't their bylaws, they have a board person on there, I just said, well, I'll be the liaison, and, you know, I'm on the beautification committee too with them now, but they broke out of that. I'm going to bring my wife, but I've been to two meetings. No, it's, they do need stuff, I mean, they're really passionate about Colster, they can clean things and get scholarships for their kids, and it's been real enjoyable, I liked that committee. And the quality of life does a good job too. It's a lot of your culture-based activities.
Yeah.
I just, I'm sure of that, so. I don't know how I want to make this recommendation, the board of trustees must, I don't want to designate a member for the board chair to serve on it, because...
You have time?
I actually, I get to work remote, so I have more flexibility.
Okay.
Yeah, we go together.
Yeah, I'd be willing to.
And you could appoint her...
We have it, too, we host, we teach.
And then we could help.
That would be great.
Yeah, if you appoint Frances, then we could help fill in if any need be.
Maybe, so then I will designate Frances for that.
All their life.
All their life. What are you too busy for? And they know, I've told them, they're working, it's tough. I think it is supposed to be president. Yeah, they wanted the board chair, but I did, it's just...
It's hard.
It's hard, so. If, it's all right, we're somehow struggling by our own chance. Not sure.
Send me, darn it.
It's right in the walls, it's a great committee.
Can I have the motion, or you can just appoint?
I'm just going to appoint.
Okay.
Hold it again.
Done and done, cool.
It's like I said, it's one of those things that, yes, one of us should be going, but if it doesn't, it's that life.
Frances, that's you.
I think I'll be for a Christmas club, after-school program, that kind of stuff. And there's like umbrella organization that we're... I think I help with the breakfast hub, after-school program, that kind of stuff, and there's like umbrella organization that we're a part of.
Uh, nine point eleven. So I have recommended, um, policy twenty-four, twenty-one, promotion and retention, and I've been going through these, working through them with the ABN team, so you know, you had a parcel of policies I brought to you in June, July, so I wanted to make sure they were here and got, get these to you. Um, for this one, the main change here, I'll read it, uh, if a parent insists that a student be retained or promoted, file that the retention or promotion was parent's decision and not recommended by the school. So I am recommending teaching staff and building principals will make final decisions respecting promotion or retention. Um, I'm strongly in favor of that, uh, my past district did quite a bit of work and research on retention, and I do believe that it's still a team effort. It's not saying that the parents aren't involved at all, but it is saying that final decision is left up to teachers of that student administration with the best interest of the child at heart, um, to retain or to promote, so. Retention, I take extremely seriously. I don't, I'm not a real advocate for retaining, uh, special elementary, there's lots of numbers out there as far as kids being at risk of not graduating, being held back. I would rather us be really working on our interventions and how to improve the, the child's achievement, that we need to do to meet those needs, um, rather than retain, and I have had parents push to hold their children back at times when I didn't think it was the best thing, and I'm I didn't do it as a principal. I actually had that say in my last district, so, um, anyway, we've discussed it quite a bit, it's an ABN team, and if you have any questions for any of them. Again, does it not involve the parent? That's all in here still too, and the whole child as you read in that, um, longer paragraph. But that's kind of the one major difference, is the final say would be, would be the educators.
I move the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the first reading of recommended changes to policy twenty-four, twenty-one, promotion and retention.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any public comment on this? Any further board? Frances.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Aye.
Handbook.
All right, um, I'll begin with, I know we have the, to, uh, present to you the PBS student handbook, FBMS student handbook, CHS student handbook, I'll talk about briefly to begin with. Um, as you know, we worked together for hours and looking at the model policy so that our handbooks look unified. Uh, we do have distinctions and some differences depending on age appropriateness and, and the school itself, but for the majority of it, we're getting things in alignment, um, where we are operating underneath the same discipline type of matrix. Um, attendance is probably the biggest change that you're going to see in there. Uh, what we worked on, I, I guess one of the, the things I've probably, I, I feel like it's been a mantle of my twenty-seven years now in administration is attendance. If we don't have the students here, they're not going to achieve, and so when you read through the attendance piece on this, I guess we should look at that together. We're really aligning it with legislation. Okay, so each student, and our policy does say that basically it looks at attendance to go to handbooks, to refer to handbooks. And there were, we're kind of all over the page, I forget what all we had, but, um, principals, teachers were feeling frustrations that over the years they've written letters of warnings, of warnings, of warnings, of warnings, of warnings, and nothing happens. What can we do? So I went right to the law, we went right to the law, and we looked at it. So that's where you're going to see this last part about, uh, truancy. Truancy is an absent during school hours or from school property without approval from the building principal. A truancy differs from an unexcused absence is one of two ways. The absence is without parent notification to the school and the building, which we've dealt with this year. Those are kind of the easy ones, right? Nobody contacts school, nobody knows, kid's true. The absent is considered beyond the definition of an unexcused absent by the building principal, so I'd have to bounce back to that, actually. A truancy counts as an unexcused absence. Habitual truancy, this was the part we were missing in our handbooks, and this is state code. If the child is discovered by the tenants' office, officer to be truant on nine or more days, or fifty-four or more parts of a day in one school year, the child may be referred to youth court as habitually truant under Title forty-one, Chapter five. And to the best of my knowledge, from principals that have been here for a long time, this hasn't existed. Um, and it is state code, and I didn't put all the consequences in there that come with state code, but basically what we're saying is that you get your ten absences, and after that, if you bounce back up to what's an unexcused, after ten, you're going to need a medical note, administrative approval for a family emergency, or a pre-arranged absence proved by the principal. So, we're going to get to that position, to that point most likely where they've had their ten, that they've reported ill, right, maybe ten times. Come number eleven, we're asking for one of those things, one of those three. Not uncommon, um, but we just didn't have it. That to me is probably, I know there might be other little nuances in each person's handbook, but what could most possibly come to the board's attention would be this section. And then the other handbooks, um, thanks to Mrs. Nanzel for helping Richard, I, some of them, they're just tweaks. Let me see, is there anything? The employee handbook, I did quite a few strikes, um, striking out of sections, deleting sections. What I was aiming for is what I mentioned last year at this time, was what we wanted to do, was get our handbook so we didn't have to, we used to have a discipline handbook, we're not going to bring that, because we'd have, if you updated it in discipline, you'd also have to update it in each different school's handbook, and which wasn't always done, so I know last year we had a discipline issue. I went to the handbook, looked at what consequence was, oop, this is Nanzel mentioned, we have a discipline handbook that says something different, so what are we going to use? What are we going to follow? So we cleaned that up too, if you remember last, yeah, okay, and then the employee handbook was real similar. There was quite a few items in there that were student and parent oriented, so they weren't really to do with an employee. They were telling employees how to handle these situations in some respects, but for the most part, they were telling parents, again, attendance policies, different policies, different consequences. And so every time you'd have to make a change, you want, you had to make it three. So that cleaned that up. I just pretty much took out everything that is already someplace else.
Okay.
We did make we had to clean up a couple of things on that for that reason. The coach sponsor handbook and the activity handbook went through and just matched them up, so I'm hoping it wasn't
But the school handbook's all right.
Discrepancies until after I had given that to you.
And then I have one other too that Alyssa brought up. So this is, which handbook are we, or what was the discrepancy with, uh, the, the school handbooks?
This is between the coach sponsor handbook and the student activity handbook, and the list of activities for each school, there just some things that banned vocal instrumental, there was that so just, it needed cleaned up so it matched the
So no policy changes?
No.
Okay, I know it's just, yeah, I've been through that before, to see whether some are listed, some aren't, okay.
And they're alphabetized.
Rich, do you have any extra?
She can have mine.
Okay.
She always needs them for minutes.
That's okay. I'll grab one others.
Yeah.
Then you're done.
She can have mine, she can have mine, but
No, thanks for cleaning that up, but that's, doesn't sound like a major you know.
And I found one other discrepancy on the student handbook. It says five senior lunch tardies, all those credit, and the, I think that says six, so I'll change that too much. So we also need to look at that BYOD, that's what got your attention.
Yep, um, there's policy five, or twenty-three?
Thirty-six thirty.
Thirty-six thirty, right? The model policy that it refers to in the handbook is thirty-six twenty, which we don't have. We have a form, thirty-six thirty, but we don't have a policy, so next meeting I will need to get the policy to match the form. Got that, didn't I? Took me a little while, get my head around that. There's a lot of stuff for tonight, like, wait a minute, so I read Alyssa's email, and Chris and I hammered it out, but, um, made sense. He eventually goes, well, we've got the form, it's right here, but we don't have the policy, and their model policy that I refer to has actually changed too. Yeah, so that's actually non-existent. I just put in the model handbook, you know, what they had, and theirs, and it refers to this policy. Well, Alyssa catches, is like, well, we don't have that, and, well, they don't either, so Chris got that. A real good team effort on all these handbook items, it's, you know, it's small, it's not, again, anything that's going to cause anybody any heartburn or problems, just we just need to take care of it.
Credit where credit's due, thanks to my secretary Stacy.
She got it, huh? Oh, man, oh, yeah.
Amazing.
Good, yeah, that was kind of a small one, it's like, yeah, I saw that, referred to that twenty, but it seems twenty, but I didn't check on it.
I think they've got all the buildings, so don't hand it out till we get one.
BYOD, bring your own device.
Bring your own device.
We'll get the official correcting.
Because their model policies, again, it has three options, so we'll have to just decide an option, make it the same for all of us, and we're done.
We don't have that in our handbooks right now, it was the attachment on the last, you know, appendix, at the end, we'd like to add that.
Yeah, can we do that? Can we just say pending the, for the form so they can send it home?
Yeah, the form's already approved. It's the one we use all the time, or it's a new form?
It needs to be approved.
Yeah, is it, is that why I didn't look at it? Is it different form?
It's the same form.
Oh.
It's just, it just includes the policy. We're just going to delete that policy because we don't have it, and we need to update our policy.
Yeah, that's what I thought. The form's good.
Form's the same.
So basically, yeah, you can, I mean, you can attach that to the handbook, but she's wanting to know if you have to prove it as part of the handbook.
We can say that we're going to attach that form that's already been approved to the handbook. I mean, no, you can put it in the
Yeah.
If it's in a first form and it shows up.
You can just set it up separately if you want it to, or staple it on, it's not
It just references a policy that's non-existent.
Right.
That's basically what it comes down to.
Okay, and then just bring it for
The form's good, just bring the policy.
Yep.
Just bring it next time and we'll
Okay, makes sense, good.
Scott, this is your legacy. I mean, the day you came in here, we were like, here are a thousand handbooks.
Yeah, we have some history. Yes, I had many long nights at home reading last year. Holy moly.
I appreciate all the work that has gone into all of these from all of you. Like, this is a huge undertaking, and I'm so happy that they're getting cleaned up. It's nice, it'll make it easier for everyone, I think.
I may have remembered you mentioning it the last two board meetings. Where are we at on my
I thought those handbooks.
Yeah, we all pushed pretty hard this week.
I am going to work on a tardy policy plan with my staff, so I will bring that back.
Always a challenge.
Any more discussion in there? I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the following handbooks for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented. PBS student handbook, FBMS student handbook, CHS student handbook, CHS course description handbook, coaches sponsors handbook as revised. Um, appendix G, emergency response and safety plan, appendix H, district programs, special education, section five oh four preschool, special education, and employee handbook.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any public comment on this? Any further board? Good job. Frances.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, nine point one three is board training. Tony broke his leg.
Yeah.
I really haven't reached out to him to redo this, so there's some hotline stuff that, uh, we call, we don't need to, uh, take action on it. It's just, these are some things we can do. There's plenty of stuff on the PBS site.
Yeah.
To review if you want to.
Check it out, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks for that.
And I would think at some point, I gotta look at our calendar, we probably have if there was somebody on that strategic plan at some point.
Facilitate.
Yeah.
The discussion, that's always nice.
I'd like to go through it.
Yeah, we'll have either her or Tony, whoever's, they'll all come down and do that.
And we can go through it without them first, and then when they come in, we can bounce our ideas off of them too, just to make sure.
Okay, yeah, we don't, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to get into that.
I want to why is January stuck in my head? I don't think it is.
Yeah, that's usually when it's gone to the board, the strategic plan in the past was January.
January.
Because remember, we had that new, there was a new part of it this year that had green, yeah, it was January.
Okay.
So I had to get ahold of Deb because we were missing. She thought we had it, and she thought she had it, and then she did send it, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, if you have any questions, of course, just holler, so.
We'll do.
There's a lot on there, a lot.
Tony said he's going to have his secretary get in touch with me to get a date. He hasn't yet, she hasn't.
I'm not, okay, I'm not getting too worried about it.
Yeah, he was in the hospital.
Yeah. Nine point one four.
Woo, okay. So I only printed, uh, ten, I wasn't sure who all who all would be here, so if you would like one and you're sitting here, let me know, I'll try to pull things up on the board too. Take one, pass them down. This is the trustees financial first, and then we'll go over the budget real quick. Um, I have some extras, does anybody want some? I still have some in the elementaries, we'll take one, pass whoever else would like one. Dan, Heidi, if you guys would like one too, do you want like one?
We have two elementaries.
Okay, all right. Brett, I have two elementaries.
I have two elementaries.
Oh, me, Lanta. Yeah, you do. I don't want to have one if you want to. What happened to that? All right, let me just check and see. Does that one say the elementary is not listed? Oh. Oh, well, that's
Element. It's fine.
Um, I can just show it up here, Chris, don't worry about it.
That's fine, yeah.
We have extra elementaries. Okay.
We all
We all do.
Looking for the high school.
You couldn't, it couldn't be perfect, guys, okay? No, this is just to make sure paying attention. That's right. Do you have two? Yeah, I was thinking high school.
Um, the budget report's on the home beach. That's the trustee's financial statement.
You have the budget?
Well, I stole one when they were up here.
Oh, I was like, wait, how did I get that screwed up in my copy?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
That's huge.
She's going to put the high school one.
Yeah.
I just did, we copied the high school one.
And I have the copy, did you take it? The high school one? The one that's, oh, right here. So if anyone wants to see the high school one, pass it around.
Yeah.
Cool. Yeah. Yeah. Um, I'll show, I'll pull up that, um, the final in just a second. So as you guys all know, it's my job to present to you guys the trustees financial, and that is basically just telling you all what happened all last year, so that's why it says twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, that's not what you're approving tonight, you're approving the budget, but this is what tells you, sets me up to do the budget. So I put together a budget versus expenditures for you guys to look at, and I'll share this, um, slideshow. Unfortunately, I didn't have it done for the board agenda to put it out there for everyone, but anyone that wants it, please ask me, I'll share the, um, presentation with you guys. This is all in the, um, TFS report as well. I just put it in a different format so you guys could see it a little bit better. It shows you like in our general fund, and the elementary is on top what our budget was, that we spent the whole budget. that we spent the whole budget, and the difference was zero. So it's pretty self-explanatory up there on that part. We had a little bit left over in the high school, but we could only spend as much revenue as what we got, so we will carry that over, and I'll show you guys that in a little bit. Um, some of these funds, you'll see, we don't spend down to zero, and there's a reason for that. The general fund is the only one that we take down to zero. So that way, it gives us a little bit of money to operate next year as well. This is our revenues versus expenditures, so that can show you in each fund where we ended up. You can see the two oh one, that's why we have zero there is, and why we had some carryover before. There's only a couple, transportation was a little bit low, and that's only because of coal proceeds was budgeted a little bit higher than what, what we got, so that way, that one is a little in the negative. And then the retirement fund, we're working on it. It, um, we've had a lot of changes with insurance, and we've been trying to get that fund out of the red. If you guys remember last year, I asked if I could move some funds to cover some of those. So that one, we, you'll see in our budget too, that we're budgeting for some more in the retirement, and that's not a, um, that's not a levy to the taxpayers. The county and the state help us pay for that retirement fund. Is there any questions on that before I go? Okay. Schedule of changes. That just shows you what my beginning cash balance was, our expenditures, our revenue, and what our ending balance is. That's the elementary. And the high school. So high school just has more because a lot of those funds on the bottom serve a purpose in both buildings. So we have our interlocal on there. You will see the interlocal took a little bit, um, bigger hit this year than normal. That is due to some of the expenditures for mostly the high school. I did move some pine view expenditures and have to recode them. The high school budget just does not, from the general fund, just does not allow us to pay a hundred and eighty thousand dollars of our electric, electric bill. And I'll go over that later, I did kind of a show for you guys on that too. And nothing against the high school, it's just with the general fund, you guys know you only get so much. So this shows you the elementary general fund and where that money was going. Eighty-one percent is to salaries and benefits, small portion to our dues and fees. You guys can see that. The utilities and maintenance are a little bit higher just because I, um, or they would be because I moved some expenditures. And then the high school, so high school salary and benefits are eighty-four percent. We'll keep an eye on that, but I do think that a lot of that, we haven't been over eighty percent until this year. But a lot of that is, you know, a lot of it is some of the benefits as well that get coded to the one oh one. So I think next year will be a little bit more telling on where we're at with our salaries and benefits. I expect to be about the same as where we are this year. This is our utilities recap, I just show you guys this. Mostly, I included this because I want you guys to kind of see, and it's helpful if you guys are thinking about joining any schools. I just put this out here not as an encouragement to do that at all, but just to kind of give you some numbers. And this is just electricity, but that's, you know, our major one. So a hundred and eighty thousand had to be moved out of the general fund expenditures and recoded to the interlocal. And then about forty thousand of that elementary was also coded to the interlocal.
So, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Is there a way to disentert what amount goes to the pool?
Um, no.
I just think that you're asking really hard, but, and I don't know if this is time to mention or not, but I think we really need somebody to come in and look at our electrical system because, and we've talked about this, but there are so many lights in this building that are not going off. They're just staying on.
I think that's definitely valid, yeah.
I harp on people about shutting lights off, and I walk around shutting lights off.
They'll bring that up tomorrow at Abbott?
Yep. Great points. Are you bored yet? Did I bore you yet?
No.
No. Good, fine. Okay, so that is the TFS. There's not a whole lot to go over, that's basically what, you know, we've been doing all year. Like I said, I'll get you the high school one. Do you guys wanna see it in form on here? Do you want me to pull it up? Okay, it looks a lot like the elementary, just with high school numbers. Um, okay. So then, okay, these are real, I see high school and elementary on top. Can't believe they didn't picture. What are they doing?
Busy.
I know, right?
Bringing this.
Yeah.
So insurance.
Yeah.
So like, if the teachers whose spouses work at the plant online, then do some of them opt not to do the insurance?
Oh, sorry.
Is that a fair number then?
That fair number is what a fair number is?
Well, like, half. If their spouse has insurance in the plant online.
Not very many people take insurance if their husband has insurance at the plant. Um, I could maybe probably think of one off the top of my head. So, yeah. Okay, so into our budget. Budget timeline, so you guys kind of know like what I've been doing. June thirtieth is the close of the last fiscal year. July first and August fifth was post the budget meeting in the paper, we did that. Um, July fifteenth, May Fairs opens, which is what I do, the TFS reporting and the budgeting in. And so doesn't give me a whole lot of time between then and now to, um, to be totally honest, to clean up any mistakes too. So, I mean, we've had some turnaround in the office, so like, any little tiny mistake of coding something can put a hiccup and then cause some more, um, changes to be made. So being able to have May Fairs open and do that, it gives me a little bit of time to adjust and make changes and do anything we need to do. July twentieth, the county provides their final cash balances, so then I also can't do anything until that point. Make sure we reconcile. First Monday, the August taxable evaluation was given, and I'll go into that a little bit later, but that does drive our budget. August fifteenth, submit the trustees' financial report to the county, and no later than August twenty-fifth, the trustees adopt the final budget. Just to kind of go over, I know some of you guys have been through this. Frances, you're kind of new, so I left this slide in there from last year. Just so that everyone knows that the board sets the budget for the budgeted funds on the left. The ones on the right are non-budgeted, and we operate within those funds. But the ones that we're talking about tonight are all the ones on the left side. AMB versus enrollment, kind of just defines this. Enrollment is your actual count of students. We report to OPI twice a year. Your AMB, which is what we use for budgeting, is calculated by OPI, and they take two count days divided by your total, if your two count day is the one that happened in October and February, and they divide by two, they multiply by a hundred and sixty-nine plus seven PIR days and divide by one eighty. And they get their AMB, so that's your average number belonging. Um, I believe on our budget, we used, we used the average number belonging on the elementary district. For the budget and the high school number must have been a little bit higher than what the AMB was, so we were able to use the higher number, you have, you get to use the higher number, so. Our taxable value is down. Like I told you, our mil value is what, four thousand eighty-three? But the taxable value is down four million eighty-three dollars, three hundred and eighty-six from FY twenty-four. Um, that's pretty big. It's not the biggest we've seen. But it's, it's pretty big for our school. What you'll notice when you look at the budgets is there's not a whole lot of difference from last year and this year from the general fund, and it's, a lot of it is going to be our taxable value. Even though we got like a big quality educator payment, it was pretty much swallowed up by this. They gave like a three percent inflation increase to all the budgets. But with, with this, we're not gonna see it come through as much, so. And just so you guys know, we don't, we don't regulate that, the Department of Revenue does, so if you're not aware with that, it's not something we can control, so. Um, the general fund, I just wanted to explain this really quick for those that are new. Funding our base budget on the left. We can only fund to eighty percent of our per AMB entitlement and eighty percent of our basic entitlement. And that is why it's so important for us to pass those overbase levies, and we did. So we get the one hundred percent, we get the max, and that's one hundred percent per your AMB entitlement, one hundred percent, all of the rest, and then seventy-five to a hundred for your special ed costs. So that makes a huge, huge difference. So, um, really important there, but it's really good for people to see kind of what funds our general fund. This is the budget that I have prepared, just kind of a comparison to last year. I always like to look at last year, and I look at the years before too, but for you guys to be able to see, if you see for the elementary, or you can see that where our budget is only two hundred thousand dollars more. So, um, it's gonna make a difference. And then also what affected us a little bit, and, and you'll see in the high school, is we did the overbase levy to the taxpayers, and legislation passed after that. So we missed out on a little bit of money as well there. We didn't, we weren't able to get the max once legislation had passed. But we, they were, we were able to get the max budget no matter what, it just takes a little bit more from the taxpayers and the, and the state aid for us to, to gain that budget. But we're still only two hundred thousand dollars more in that general. Um, I came down just a little bit in the transportation. What I budgeted for that, just because of our routes, and we're not running like, like we used to. And last year, we have our unreserved fund balance is a hundred and fifty-five thousand in our transportation. So I chose not to levy in that fund. Bus depreciation, there is a small amount because we are planning on doing two buses. Robert says we're on a rotation to replace two. Tuition, next year, I will be putting something in there. We did receive things this year, but it was too late. Back, back in March, I believe, I had to do the intent to impose taxes on the public, and I did not include the tuition fund. But I have since received in the elementary about five thousand dollar bill. So as I am invoicing Langdear and Harden for tuition for their students to come here, we got charged as well. So it wasn't in time to do this, but in the future, I do plan on levy for that small amount, just so that that fund can pay for that. That's what it's there for. But it was too late to do it this year. You can see our retirement is up quite a bit, so. And then adult ed is very healthy. I didn't, oh, that's elementary, we don't have adult ed on elementary. Um, we have our tech fund has a little bit levied in there. In the future, I do believe the auditors will be talking to me about either running another tech levy, a voted levy, or will we, they'll have to take some of the programs that we code to tech. We code a lot of programs to tech when it may have to be our general fund start picking up some of those, and if it can't, then we'll go to other funds like Impact Aid and our interlocal, things like that. But we would like to, I've talked to Derek too, about like getting on the same page as, um, what programs are we using? What are people not using? Can we cut anything there? Is it, are we being wasteful, I guess? And if not, like, that's kind of an admin decision to have, but the programs is on my mind due to the tech fund on carrying some of that. So that may change in the future, just heads up. And then the building reserve. I did the state major maintenance aid that I told you guys that I was gonna do. They upped their, before it didn't really seem really worth it, and now they have changed their calculation. So we get a lot more back from that. And then I know these guys went to a safety summit, and that money can be used for safety things, so, um, hopefully, we'll talk about that a little bit later of what that money could be potentially used for. There we go. And then our high school budget, kind of the same situation. I didn't have as much funds to carry over in the general fund. We like to, I didn't talk about the reserves, but that second column is the reserve column. We always try to obtain at least what it asks on there, that we do reserve ten percent, twenty percent, and so on down the list. There's only four of them that let you reserve a maximum. Didn't quite get there with the general fund, but when you do a bond and you ask for a bond, they look at that, and they look and see, are we keeping, are we getting close to that ten percent, that twenty percent? And if we are, that tells them that we're healthy, we're stable. So I took that into account to try to keep that exactly where it should be. And then you can see in that other revenue column, a lot of that other revenue is our coal proceeds, the coal mitigation block grant that we receive. And adult education there, I didn't, I didn't levy in that one. I feel like it is very, still very healthy. Every once in a while, I, I have, I did do it the year before, because the coal proceeds, when we get those in, I have to put them back to the funds that we levy the taxpayers in. And I have a calculation, but it gets spread out the exact same way as I do the mil. So that's why every once in a while, I'll throw in adult ed just to get some revenue coming in there other than what we're paying for classes or salaries for the adult ed. And they do pick up some of the cost of the pool and things like that. So if we're not getting any funds in and we're just spending, so that helps to levy just a small amount in there so we can get some coal proceeds in there as well. Tech is on there again, same situation with that, and the building reserves. So not too crazy. That unreserved fund balance re-appropriated is the cash that we still have on hand. It kind of explains that we can keep ten percent of it in that general fund. If I had more than that, the general fund limit is fifteen percent of the ensuing year's maximum general fund budget. So unreserved fund balance exceeds that amount will be remitted to the state guarantee account. We haven't had to do that yet.
Don't worry.
We're not there yet. Okay, we're almost there, we're almost done, guys. Okay, looking ahead, these are things that just I have put down of things for us to just be thinking about is the bond election, bus rotations in FY twenty-seven, enrollment changes, and our taxable valuation. Our enrollment is down along with your taxable valuation. So that is things that we'll just want to keep an eye on and look at, and that's why I said watch our trigger points. And, you know, my suggestion was maybe to like, look at them again if you guys are, you know, if you, if you want to look at those again, just think, just looking at maybe our trigger point for enrollment is a certain number, you know, but also if our taxable valuation goes down, we might have to start looking at some things there. Keeping our budget authority as always, top priority with those overbase levies. And then the state major maintenance aid funds. Like I said, they went to a safety summit, so there are some funds there to be used for that, and maybe they will have some ideas, and they all came back pretty chatty about what they did there. So hopefully, there are some ways that we can spend that money intentionally and start having that conversation about how you guys wanna spend that.
I don't know which word this is.
And then we're just gonna throw it out the window. And then we're just going to throw it out the window. Seems like you could, oh my god.
I know how much work it takes for you to do this and I know the amount of hours you gotta put in and I thank you for all of this.
You are welcome.
You are always on point and it's always there and ready to go, so, thank you.
Aside from high school, I forgot to copy off. I almost had it all together, almost.
I would like for discussion points to come back to our first work session.
Absolutely.
It's like, how many buses do we have? Do we need all of those buses?
Exactly, we have a lot of road buses that we could probably.
Yeah. Just, yeah. Trigger points, looking at what we said was in there and do we need to look at something else? I think that's great. Yeah, I think we should definitely have discussions about those.
Yeah, it'd be good to keep that in the back here, let's put that on that bullet point first.
Will do. Any other questions?
Brittany?
Yeah.
I saw a couple comments.
Yeah.
First of all, thank you.
You're welcome.
But in our church alone, I think we have like 40 homeschool students.
Yeah.
And I know that when, a number of years ago, when we opened, when we encouraged the homeschool students to participate in middle school activities, we actually got quite a few enrolled in the school through that. And I think the more that we can reach out to the homeschool community, because our homeschool population all the way through high school is growing in our church.
Yeah.
And so the more we encourage them to be involved in activities, the more likely it might get more critical.
Yeah.
And then I went to the 27th Annual Energy Open and just in the conversation there, I was hoping that there would be, you know, more families moving in as some of these new energy resources are beginning construction. And there may be initially, but not as much as I thought because it's so easy to convert the existing workforce to handle the nuclear and whatever else is coming. So that wasn't as hopeful as I wished. So, yeah, there's just, we gotta find other ways.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
I moved that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees adopts the following budgets. Elementary budget 2526-0796 and high school budget 2526-0797. Second.
Okay, I'm motion second. Any other public comment on this? Any for the board? Francis?
Hi.
Brittany?
Hi.
Angie?
Hi.
Tiff?
Hi.
Pretty good, again. Thank you for everything.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
There we go, I did. I was yelling, I don't want to see her out here at nine, 10 o'clock at night.
No, that's done.
Working on the budget.
That's done.
Keep starting sentences that start with "I." Don't want to see you out here.
That's what I told her.
I appreciate it.
I told her I wouldn't tell anybody she'd shoot till 11 o'clock in the morning.
I came in two hours late today.
Yes, good for you.
Right?
Long time. She wasn't feeling you. 10.01. Scott?
Yeah, I just, I really wanted to talk a little bit about safety. Because the admin team did go to the Jeremy Bullock Safe Schools Conference last week in buildings for two days and I guess the thought was like, this is kind of like the worst thing to go to and it's sort of like the best thing to go to at the beginning of school year because it's so tough to hear those stories and those situations that there's just getting more and more of as far as school shootings, intruders, just the threats, from bomb threats to again, the deaths, all the tragedies. So, you know, we became very aware of our needs and some of those that we'll be working on real soon. I know I tried to put a lot of effort into that at the beginning of the year. We brought, we brought in a threat assessment training, or went to threat assessment training, brought in the teams. And that's part of legislation and those need to improve, I heard about that. From everything, from doors to windows to shades to just different procedures too. And I think we learned a lot. It was really hard. We began with hearing from a parent from Sandy Hook, that she started the Sandy Hook Promise Organization. So they have a lot of resources. One of them, an anonymous tip line that I know Wyoming taps into, she named about four states to do and I used that and, you know, that's something we could look at too. But when you start the conference, listen to a parent like that. And then we end, actually Jeremy Bullock, who was a student shot, I believe is 11 years old, on the playground in Buick. And, you know, his parents started this conference, they said six years ago. And it's only gotten better and better, just outstanding sessions that were put on for us to attend. So we have lots of takeaways, more than we could even get done and handle in a year. So we'll be looking at priorities as an admin team, what we want to do first, what we need to put in place. Because like, the one that I know Bart and I were in that same session, one of the law enforcement of some sort, he used to be a teacher and his wife was a principal, anyway, he's in the schools in Alabama. And he was just tremendous. And he said, you know, all of the curriculum, all of the test scores, all of, everything you deal with is so important. He said, but if your kids don't feel safe and aren't safe, then you can forget all the rest. And that's the note, I kind of want to leave the board on and us on and to leave it on tonight and to begin with, because to make sure everybody's safe in school and how to do that, it's a tremendous amount of work. You know, I've been in this education now for 39 years, this is my 39th year. And we went from field, you know, fire drills and that's all you did, to never talking about safety. I remember when Columbine happened, I remember dealing with my first threat. I remember dealing with the bomb threat, deaths of students, deaths of teachers. All of it's tragic, all of it's difficult to deal with it and you have to have a really good plan. And so I did find a template there for emergency plan of operation that we really have to work on and get in place. So that's kind of going to be, that's going to be a major emphasis for us this year, first and foremost. And I've been trying to make that one of my, I guess, responsibilities, I know it is. So, don't take it lightly and neither do any of the people that were at the training. So, anyway, it was great, appreciate being able to go to that and learn and always want to, I want to get some of the people that weren't there this year to it next year. Next year bounces to Buick. So I know we had some maintenance people there from other districts, we didn't send Robert. There were also, let me see, those I think that might benefit from that. But anyway, we'll, we'll keep going. It was extremely good way to start the year, to think about what's really important. Like I said, it all is, but nothing as important as keeping everybody safe. And it can happen anywhere, anything can happen. I never thought I'd deal with a bomb threat. We thought it was real. I mean, that was scary in a small school district, so.
Well, I think you got to pull back on the board, whatever you guys feel like you need to do, just do it. You know? If it comes to a budgetary thing where you need board approval, of course. But if it doesn't?
Do it.
Do it. So.
Be talking to you guys. It's nice to see some of that budget in there, but.
We'll get ahead, either way, we'll figure it out.
On that, I'll swing by the elementary and check out the new coverings got on the window. FM Creations came in today, did a beautiful job putting up new kind of safety screen over our windows and it looks really good, nice little design and pretty cool. So swing by the elementary and check it out.
I'm not just thrilled.
Cafeteria and the main office windows and then depending on budget, we'll roll down the whole front of the building eventually through my office. But I want to get those two areas of concern, the cafeteria was huge.
Yeah.
It's a lot of windows there.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah.
But it looks really nice, they did a great job on it, so.
Oh yeah, we heard all about the fish bowls, we heard about ways that are more and more improvements with safety and in schools, some really good exhibitors there. To be, I brought some things back for us to look at, so, yeah. I mean, if there's nothing else, I mean, that's, we need to get that done. Can't feel more called to something than I did when I got back from that, so, purpose.
All right. Brittany, again, thank you.
You're welcome.
I know, that's not fun. Oh, she laughed every minute. Brittany, good to hear it.